November 13th Regular Business Meeting of City Council, Vice Mayor Henderson. Would you please pledge allegiance?
I will. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Right, I know. I thank you. Just to remind folks in attendance that if you'd like to speak during the public hearing or citizen comment period, if you could sign in the back of the room, there's a table with a sign-in sheet in the back, and we appreciate that. The first item on the agenda this evening is the consent agenda. Is there a motion to pursue, approve the consent agenda as presented?
Still moved.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Four zero. Matters from council members is number three. Anything folks have shared this evening?
I've got two things, I guess. One is Fishburne did a great Veterans Day ceremony up there. What was it?
Friday.
Yeah, Friday afternoon. The cadets did a great job, did a great presentation, and I appreciate having them in our town. And then the second, I just found out today that one of our local reporters, Mr. Bob Stewart, is retiring at the end of the month, and I just want to thank him for all his years at service with the News-Virginian. I'm retired from the State Police, and we have a few reporters in town that you really trust to tell the true story, and they're going to report it the way it's reported to them, and Bob Stewart's one of those guys.
Absolutely is, absolutely is. An asset to our community, so happy retirement, Bob. Well-earned. Does anybody have anything else they'd like to add? Okay. Moving on to item number four is a consider issuing a proclamation naming November 24th a Small Business Saturday in the city of Waynesboro. Do we, Mr. Hamp, do you have anything you'd like to share for that regard?
Other than just to generally state that I don't think the council needs to be reminded, but perhaps for the benefit of those present and the listening public, that small businesses are obviously vitally important to our local economy and especially our downtown district. Moreover, small business owners frequently contribute substantially to the social and community fabric in Waynesboro, and additionally are key employers, civic leaders, and charitable givers, and they support and contribute to our overall community identity and brand. I think sometimes people underestimate the percentage and the measure of investment and employment that actually we enjoy through small businesses as opposed to sometimes the more commonly recognized national brands that are also located in the community. So in that spirit, as the holiday retail season and dining season approaches, I thought it was important for the council to recognize the value, and more specifically, our small business community here in Waynesboro, and do so by proclaiming November the 24th as Small Business Saturday here in Waynesboro, Virginia.
Thank you very much. Any comments? Awesome. So it is said, so it is, right?
Correct.
Great, thank you. And a growing small business community, too, so it's exciting things happening in the city, particularly in our downtown. Item five is to hold a public hearing and receive comment regarding proposed amendments to the charter of the city of Waynesboro specifically: one, amending the date and time of the annual city council organizational meeting to coincide with the first regular meeting of city council in July; two, amending and the consideration of an ordinance by city council from twice to once; and three, confirming that application to the Board of Equalization is a prerequisite to the jurisdiction of the Circuit Court with respect to asset disputes. Ms. Michelson?
The resolution that the city council is considering is a resolution requesting that the General Assembly amend the city charter in three areas. It's important to note that the city council is not amending the city charter through this resolution, just starting the process to request that the General Assembly introduce a bill and pass a bill amending these charter amendments. So it's a sort of a long and sometimes complex process. It's also important to put the proposed charter amendments in context of how, you know, and why I proposed some of these charter amendments. When Mayor Short started the conversation about voter engagement and how the city could encourage and increase voter participation, it led to discussions about whether changing the voting structure set forth in the city charter could encourage voter participation. And to change the city charter, as I said, is a long, you know, process, and as such, if the city council were inclined to request a charter amendment relating to the current ward system, it made sense to review the charter as a whole to see if there were other areas where the charter could or should be changed. Upon my review of the charter, I proposed three areas where the city charter was not really in line with the Virginia Code. In fact, two of those areas, the organizational meeting and the ordinance consideration, the city charter is in fact more restrictive than required or allowed by Virginia Code. As such, the proposed language reduces some of the restrictions and comports more with the language of the Virginia Code. Specifically, the three charter amendments are amending, the first one is amending the time and date of the organizational meeting. This is really sort of an administrative issue. The city charter has a specific requirement that the organizational meeting be held on July 1st at 9:00 a.m. of each year, whereas the Virginia Code allows a lot more flexibility. Virginia Code 15.21416 simply states that cities must hold an organizational meeting, you know, in July. So they're really, you know, given the holiday, given the time, 9:00 a.m. in the morning, and some other, you know, constraints with, you know, council members' time, it just seemed to make more sense to provide city council with that more flexibility, again, that the Virginia Code, you know, allows. And likewise, most localities have similar flexibility built in to their charters. The second proposed charter amendment would concern the application to the Board of Equalization relating to respect to tax assessment disputes. The city ordinance requiring application for relief to the Board of Equalization in the year for which the assessment is challenged and disposition by the Board of Equalization has long been a prerequisite to the jurisdiction of the Circuit Court to hear an appeal with respect to real estate assessments, pretty much as long as the city has been in existence. That's been on, you know, in the city code for a long time. However, over the years, the language in the Virginia Code has shifted, and so they've sort of come out of alignment. So as such, the city, I would recommend that the city would just confirm through the General Assembly that it has that authority in its charter, consistent with what's in its city code. Lastly, as I noted, the proposed change, the city council going from the required two considerations of an ordinance, which is currently in its charter, just to one consideration. And I think it's important to note that this proposed change does not in any way reduce or affect public notice or the public's right to be heard or comment on any ordinance. Public input pretty much will stay the same regardless of whether this change is adopted or not. Currently, the second consideration of an ordinance is part of a consent agenda, as we just had a minute ago, and, which is voted in a block with other ordinances at the beginning of the city council meeting. At that time, there is no public deliberation or input before the second consideration. At the second consideration, there's really no specific opportunity for the public to be reheard on that ordinance at that time before the consent agenda. As such, the proposed change makes no change from the public input perspective, and, you know, the public input stays the same as if it was just one ordinance. Just as now, if the changes, you know, goes through, the public will still have the opportunity to be heard on any ordinance, and city council may also table or continue the discussions on an ordinance of particular import to the public if the city council feels that more investigation or more information or more discussions are warranted, and, but still allows city council to maintain the ability to pass ordinances concerning routine or day-to-day operations of the city, you know, by, you know, one consideration. In addition, at any time, members of the public can speak, you know, to any issue of public concern at any city council meeting, you know, at the end of each city council meeting, we have an opportunity for the public to be heard on any matter of public concern. So even if the ordinance is passed in the first resolution and someone didn't have the opportunity, you know, to come to that city council where that ordinance was heard or didn't hear about it until later, the public still has the opportunity to come, you know, at the next or later city council meeting and speak to that ordinance that was passed a month ago or last, you know, meeting and say, hey, this impacts me this way, or I think this, because ordinances, as we've seen, can be easily amended and changed, you know, as needed. So I don't really feel that there is going to be any impact or lessening of any public input or consideration, you know, with this change. It's also important to note that the Virginia Code sets forth when and how the city must provide notice of the public hearing and what that content is, so this change would not affect any of those issues as well, because we, you know, the city would still be following what's required of the Virginia Code, depending on the particulars of an ordinance, because the Virginia Code requires different things depending on the subject matter of the ordinance. So in conclusion, basically, this change would allow the city more flexibility to make city operations more efficient, avoid additional city resources and funds, and make the enactment of most ordinance just a little bit less costly. By way of example, most localities do not consider ordinances twice. No towns that I am aware of consider them twice. No counties consider them twice. Most cities in the valley don't consider them twice. Some cities, such as Alexandria, City of Harrisonburg, City of Stanton, consider most ordinances once, but reserve two considerations for appropriations, borrowing money, and taxes. So if an ordinance has to do with any of those three things, it will be considered twice. It's considered twice, but it's not necessarily considered at two meetings. It just has to be at a meeting three days apart, so it might be, you know, a working meeting or something in between where the public might necessarily not be at those as regular. So, you know, the city could also, you know, propose in its resolution some, you know, restrictions or limitations on which if it wanted to, say for example, borrowing money or appropriations or taxes, have two considerations, we could also, you know, amend the charter or request the charter be amended to include, you know, any of those restrictions if city council were obliged. Most cities, though, in the valley, Winchester, Lynchburg, Lexington, Charlottesville, do not consider ordinances. Their charter doesn't even speak to considering them two times. It just passes by majority at, you know, one public hearing. So I know it, you know, was done long ago, but I think most localities have just seen the practical side of, you know, moving forward to one ordinance unless it's of a particular, you know, public interest note. So I'm happy to answer any questions that the city council may have.
So are there any questions, Ms. Michelson?
So can I ask Mr. Hamp a question?
Sure.
Having, having two hearings with, will we vote on the second one, has any services been interrupted or not performed by waiting that extra two weeks?
Not that I can recall specifically. I would think that sometimes the situation requires the manager to exercise some managerial discretion and accept some managerial responsibility, but I can't recall specifically a case in which the delay was debilitating or had some meaningful impact. I might inquire with my colleague, Mr. Shaw, if he can recall such a case.
We certainly have to delay purchase or expenditure until an ordinance is adopted, and in fact, as a matter of practice, the ordinance isn't effective for 10 days after its adoption, so there certainly are delays, and I wouldn't say that it necessarily disrupts service to the citizenry. I took a little bit of time to go through the ordinances that the council has adopted over a period of several years, and what I found was that about 35% of the ordinances are topics for which a public hearing has been held. And so then, as Ms. Michelson has stated, the Virginia Code is very clear about those matters for which we have to have a public hearing. Many councils practice that once a public hearing is held, then unless you advertise another public hearing, then there's not additional comment received from the public in a formal setting. And so, you know, as our practice is that the matter then shows up on a consent agenda where it's not discussed, and I do think there are times when we're, especially dealing with business development practices, where that delay is a bit clumsy. The other issues tend to be about a third of the ordinances deal with receiving money that either through grants and donations or the receipt of state and federal funds for the school system through the appropriation ordinances. About 25% or so of the ordinances are for expenditures. We would be required to have a public hearing if an expenditure were to exceed 1% of our budget, and in my experience, we've never had that sort of an ordinance, so they tend to be expenditures that are somewhat emergent, you know, that where you have something that's broken or like the flooding of the police department or something like that, where you really want to be able to respond quickly. And then a very small percentage of ordinances, usually less than 10% in any year, are just moving money across funds where the council has to act to put money into certain types of reserves or that sort of thing. As sort of an editorial observation, one of the things that I've seen with the current system is that we hold a public hearing and in some cases receive a fair amount of public comment, that you have a land use application that creates some level of concern, and so folks come out and speak. The council can introduce the ordinance without commentary, and then at the next meeting, it's adopted with a consent agenda, and I've witnessed, and I wouldn't say numerous, but it's happened certainly more than once, where people don't really know what happened. I mean, they literally sit through a meeting and then will ask towards the end, when is the council going to deal with the issue that we've spoken to? And so I sometimes feel as if those folks are left wondering what's, you know, what the council was thinking. I mean, that if it is passed with the consent agenda, again, you're not required to provide commentary on your votes anyway, in any case. But I do find that that's a clumsy system, and that certainly as we deal with folks, development folks, business folks who work in other jurisdictions, it's a bit clumsy for them as well.
Thank you. Well, that's, that's certainly helpful. I think, you know, my interest is to, to have a conversation about, you know, efficiencies in terms of appropriation, exchange of money from one to another, to eliminate a bureaucracy where, you know, grant funds are, come in, I'm just giving the example, it might not be the example, but it might be an example, is that we get body cam, body cam grant from the federal government, and so that's advertised, goes two weeks, and come up and introduced, and then another four weeks, or another two weeks, and then 10 days after that, and then, in the meanwhile, versus just appropriating it one vote, and so, and so this is one of the reasons why we do these, we have these conversations, is that, you know, this stuff doesn't happen in a vacuum. It happens because it's important to involve the public and to provide meaningful opportunities for input, so. So with that, does anybody have anything else they'd like to share?
It would be nice to have additional conversation in regards to the system, how it's set up in Stanton, you know, with there being restrictions.
Right. Right, yeah. I mean, because I certainly wouldn't want anybody to feel that they're getting something less. I mean, the other sort of nuance, I don't know how it works in some of these other communities, Ms. Michelson, that you'd mentioned, but relative to when their public comment period is, too, you know, we hold our public comment period at the end of a meeting. So if we do have, so if we did have a process where we have a public hearing on a topic and we have a conversation and they weren't able to make it, there's really no other formal, I mean, they might call Bruce or Sam or me or whoever and have, and have a conversation, but I don't want one, there's really not another formal opportunity for comment, so, but, yeah, so great. Anything else? All right, well, great. We will, with that, we'll open up the public hearing. Mr. Hamp?
Mr. Greg Bruno?
Greg Bruno, 200 South Wayne Avenue. I want to speak in strong opposition to the reduction of the considerations of ordinances from two down to one. I have been present here at city council meetings on a pretty regular basis since right after the turn of the century, and I've watched all the interactions that have taken place, and I was actually here when they implemented the two considerations as opposed to when we just had one before. And the reason why those two considerations were implemented is because we were not given enough opportunity to discuss, to talk to our representatives or to discuss matters before they were voted on for a final time. And I disagree with saying that after the vote takes place that you can still talk about something, because in all that time, nearly two decades, I have never seen an ordinance changed based on public input after the vote's been taken. It just doesn't happen. So unless we get the opportunity to talk about an ordinance before the final vote, it gets ignored. That's, that's just the way it is. I also disagree with the assertion that this doesn't change anything, because when you take away that second consideration, even though the public is not allowed to speak during that second consideration during the consent agenda, there is a full week or two, two weeks between the two meetings when they can send emails or call their city council representative. That will disappear. In the reality, from the side of the podium, sometimes when issues come up, we hear nothing about it. If there's a notice in the newspaper, many of us don't read a newspaper. I haven't had a subscription to the newspaper in 15 years. So we may be aware that something's coming up, because we might see it on a website somewhere, but often we don't know, and if we do see it, the detail level that's inside those notices does not really tell us everything that's going on. Often it says, come see the city manager if you want details. The details of this ordinance or something are in the city manager's office. People just don't have time for that. So I believe that even the existing process is inadequate. With the consent agenda, at the beginning of the second meeting, people don't get a chance to talk about it. You guys have already mentioned something about when the public speaking period, it takes place at the end of the meeting. If you're going to change that, that would certainly help, but you're actually going in a negative direction when you're trying to eliminate that second consideration in the consent agenda, because it does give you time between when you first hear about it and when the second consideration and the final vote take place. And from personal experience over all those years, many, many, many times, the first meeting, city council meeting, is when we first hear about the proposal. We don't have any time to think about it, no time to research it, to form an opinion in that one meeting. So if that vote takes place during that meeting, it basically eliminates all input from the public, and that's my view on it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bruno.
Mr. Robert Horowitz?
Mr. Horowitz, if you could state your name and address for the record, please.
Robert Horowitz, 1216 Frederick Street, Waynesboro.
And you'll see the little green light come on and then stop.
Okay. I'll try to keep it short. I, too, disagree with the, what I think is the second proposal, which is the consideration of twice. My numbers may be wrong, then, it's what she says in notes. I'm going to give two quotes first. Democracy means far more than the right to vote. It means the right to participate in every aspect of community life. The people must believe that they can take part. That was Michael Manley, Prime Minister of Jamaica. And a second. Only a knowledgeable, empowered, and vocal citizenry can perform well in democracy. David Brin, a scientist and author, who's the Transparents Society, won the Freedom of Speech Award from the American Library Association. Sadly, attendance at city council meetings is generally poor. I don't go as often as I should. Time is needed for the citizenry to become informed, contemplate, and evaluate a proposal. The fine members of the city council have had the opportunity to become familiar with the proposals they put forth. The public may not even be aware a proposal is under consideration. Even if that information is shared in newspapers, social media, or the city's website ahead of time, not everyone may be knowledgeable. Very few decisions should be rushed to be finalized, especially laws, regulations, or proposals that will affect the citizenry of Waynesboro and their pocketbooks. Limiting public input raises questions on the viability and integrity of a proposal. Transparency is important, providing adequate time for the public comment to increase public trust. Again, a moderate amount of time should be given to the citizenry to become informed, to be empowered to analyze, and if necessary, be part of the conversation. Public comment lets the citizenry be vocal in discussion, in debate, so they express support for, opposition to, or make suggested changes that may assist in making a proposal better. We might want to maintain it or even eliminate it. Being involved in decision-making helps assure the citizenry buys into a proposal that will affect them. Minimizing the adequate time needed to provide citizenship knowledge, gathering, and public comment means demeaning the public performance and participation in democracy. I think it's too general, and it should be modified to be more restrictive, to cover certain things, because I trust the city council. I've worked with them in other bases, and we've come to agreements and worked together. I've worked with them in other bases and we've come to agreements and worked together. But I don't know who may be there five years down the road and I might not trust them to put forth a proposal that is immediately approved and not given time to be considered by the public. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Horowitz. Okay. With that, I will close the public hearing. Any questions or comments from council?
Well, I would say to Mayor Short that I appreciate the comments. I think it's a, it is a good conversation to have, you know, what is important and are there ways that it would be reasonable to streamline the process, you know, as Mayor Short had mentioned, transferring money, you know, a federal grant that comes through, sitting on it for four weeks doesn't seem like it's a good use of the time. But then perhaps having other considerations that we do have that deliberation and make sure that the public does get the chance to have their input. So I'd be open to thinking about if there are ways to make that happen.
Thank you.
And I agree with Dr. Haas that I've gotten a number of phone calls this week over this matter and most people that call, I haven't had any that go along with the, they're all opposed. So working for a resolution to be able to free up funds quicker, but have a second reading on the things that are really important for the citizens of Waynesboro is needed.
Yeah, I'll just offer that I wholeheartedly agree. I mean, that's as evidenced by other things that, I mean, you know, my tenure on council and then working with my colleagues on council now, we've done, I think, things that as a life, a career planner, I'm excited about. I mean, we have, you know, from our YouTube channel launching so that you don't have to have a cable subscription to watch a council meeting. We can go back to the tapes, see what we said or what we missaid, right? Because we're not perfect. And then from even, that's more, you know, the beginning of the tenure and then even to present day and the conversations that we've had with the electoral board and how to improve civic participation and voter turnout. I mean, it would, any notion otherwise would run afoul to, I think, is the evidence that we were troubled. I know I'm troubled by the lack of civic participation and public participation. So I certainly wouldn't want to do anything to upend that. So with that being said, I think, I think that there might be, maybe we should approach these, but we don't have to take action this evening, so we can consider them on the 26th. But I don't want anybody walking out of this room thinking that there's any additional interest, at least from the four here today, or however, that any interest to subvert or even, even the appearance, even the appearance of not affirming and presenting opportunities for the public to have conversation would not be something that we would consider. And I just, I guess, did I read that accurately?
Yes.
Okay. So I guess, I guess for the subsequent meeting, because there is a timeline here with this. So we have our meeting on the 26th and our delegates, who I've spoken with and sort of gearing up for the election conversation and ward structure conversation, they are basically holding a spot for us for their pre-filing, which is due on December the 2nd. So I think within just, you know, I'm far from perfect, so step in if I say this wrong, but I think it would be fair to say it would be helpful, perhaps more helpful, for our meeting on the 26th to have, relative to this specific topic of two to one, to focus exclusively to appropriation or, not appropriation, but you know, the financial grants and grants that we might receive and how to streamline that process to get that on, up to the streets more efficiently. So, is that, okay. I've said a lot there. All right, thank you very much. That was a great conversation, folks. Oh, and I didn't, I didn't, I didn't want to leave that, I almost forgot. So to again, to give an update of why aren't we talking about ward structure and council elections here? And I think, I think the consensus that I certainly got from talking to colleagues and then members of the school board is what a wonderful discussion that we had at Kate Collins the other week. And I think really afforded an important and timely conversation about local elections and that are really nationally. I mean, we're not unique in this. If you held a May election throughout the country, you're looking at 20%. It doesn't matter where you're at. And so I think there's more work to do. I think that would be a fair statement and certainly something that we didn't feel appropriate, I know I didn't feel would be appropriate to try to get a spot on December 2nd to do. I think it's an important conversation. I'm excited about some of the discussions that have happened subsequent to that and ways that we might be able to energize members of our community that don't participate either in civic life or voting and finding ways to reach them and to get them to participate and know that your local, local government is really the most important government. It's the thing that impacts you every day of your life in the city. So, all right. Moving on to item number six is to consider adopting a resolution in support of Virginia's Certificate of Public Need Program for Medical Facilities as and as requested by Augusta Health. Mr. Shaw.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, Augusta Health has requested local governing bodies in our region to consider adopting this resolution in support of Virginia's Certificate of Public Need Program. The resolution then would be forward to our General Assembly Representatives in advance of the 2019 session. The Virginia Certificate of Public Need Program requires owners and sponsors of identified medical care facility projects to secure a COPN from the State Health Commissioner prior to initiating projects for a variety of medical care and diagnostic services. And the program is intended to contain healthcare cost while ensuring financial viability and access to healthcare for all Virginians. And this is accomplished by discouraging oversupply and by promoting the financial stability and viability of healthcare providers in local and regional markets. The crux of the matter is that in the healthcare industry, some services are more profitable than others. As a community hospital, Augusta Health is required to care for patients that show up at the emergency room regardless of their health insurance status. And so subsequently, the hospital ends up serving folks who are either uninsured or underinsured. They're able to, to some extent, make up for that financial loss through other types of services that are more profitable, such as imaging services or obstetrics. And so the COPN is meant to evaluate whether a healthcare provider essentially would enter in the market and could, for lack of a better word, poach those more profitable services so that in those clinics wouldn't be under the same obligation, responsibility to serve folks who are indigent or who are simply underinsured. And so the COPN is the process by which that evaluation, that market need is evaluated. So however, COPN programs have their detractors and in recent years, a number of bills to reform or repeal COPN and the Commonwealth have been considered at some level at the Virginia General Assembly. Proponents of the COPN programs note that a majority of states, 36, and the District of Columbia have COPN programs and that Virginia hospitals and healthcare systems provide over $600 million per year of free or discounted services to patients that lack healthcare coverage and that the COPN program levels the competitive playing field for those hospitals that provide free and discounted services.
Great, thank you very much. Any questions from council members?
Not so much a question, but a comment. As a practicing physician, certainly I see all the time the benefits of Augusta Health to our community and the fact that they do offer a lot of discounted services to many patients in the area and that that is a service they are required to do, but they do in a fair and I think a way that reaches out to the community that does need them. And if someone were to take away some of the more profitable services, that would certainly be endangered. So that, you know, I do not work for Augusta Health. I work for a different system, but I support the continued use of this program in Virginia.
Thank you. Any other comments? Is there a motion to adopt the resolution communicating support for Virginia's Certificate of Public Need Program?
So moved.
Thank you. Is there any discussion? Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, thank you. Hey, appropriation ordinances, everybody. All right, so appropriation ordinances. Item 7A is to consider introducing an ordinance appropriating Community Development Block Grant Program income in the amount of $9,000 to the Capital Projects Fund for transfer to the CDBG Restricted Reserve Fund account to be used for a future CDBG project. Mr. Ham.
Yes, sir. So the city has received a check in the amount of $9,000 from a settlement in the former, in a, from a former CDBG-funded project. The property was sold or refinanced prior to the tenure term of the loan. What we would propose is that the funds be placed in a restricted fund balance and used in the future for a CDBG project.
Great, Jim.
I say we propose that, but essentially we have little choice but to handle the matter that way.
Great. Are there any questions? Is there a motion to introduce ordinance? Introduce.
I'll make the motion.
Great, thank you. Any ordinance introduced this evening will come before us at our November 26th meeting. Item 7B is to consider introducing an ordinance appropriating a portion of the unassigned fund balance in the amount of $28,335 to the General Fund to support joint operations with Blue Ridge Community College Online Outpost and the GoVirginia Cybersecurity Workforce Development and Jobs Program. Mr. Ham.
So this appropriation will enable the city to secure space in the downtown district for two initiatives related to workforce development, one being the Blue Ridge Community College Online Outpost, which will facilitate information sharing with residents concerning course opportunities and enrollment and beyond that, even some online course instruction. In addition to the Blue Ridge outpost opportunity, the space will co-locate, or we will co-locate in that space, an initiative related to cybersecurity job training, which is an initiative funded by the GoVirginia Grant Program, recently adopted by the Commonwealth. So in the broadest sense of the description, these two opportunities reflect both local initiative and partnership with Blue Ridge Community College and financial support from the General Assembly to attend to improving job training for the local workforce. And we did not contain funds in the current fiscal year to fund the lease, the utilities and space improvements. So this would cover those expenses for the balance of fiscal year 2019 and you should expect to see lease and utility expenses in the proposed 2020 budget.
Great, thank you. Are there any questions?
Do we have a timeframe here on when this is going to be up and running?
So I would estimate that by around the time of the new calendar year.
They're looking to start in January, what Dr. Danny and I were talking. And I would also just offer, not related to this ordinance, but I did have conversations, I've had conversations just for the benefit of my colleagues with Bright Transit to examine ways that we might be able to partner with them to expand transit service into the downtown area to facilitate meaningful and affordable transportation for students that might want to benefit from the program, all the way from Stewart's Drive, Fisher'sville and into the city limits. So just as a heads up, more to come on that, but they're working some numbers. Is there a motion to introduce the ordinance?
So moved.
Thank you. Item 7C is to consider introducing an ordinance and appropriating a portion of the Capital Projects Equipment and Facilities Maintenance Reserve in the amount of $170,000 to the Capital Projects Fund for engineering and design work at Sunset Park. Mr. Ham.
Mayor Short and members of the council, this appropriation would get us started in earnest with the design for the park. It would be, or the quote that's in front of you, "contemplates the full complement of facility and development of the park," which I think is in the 1.7 to 1.9 million dollar range. And this gets us, like I said, a full complement of necessary drawings related to road, infrastructure, layout and drainage, et cetera, and a bid-ready document.
Great. Is, are there any questions? Is there a motion to introduce?
So moved.
Thank you. Item 7D is to consider introducing an ordinance appropriating a portion of the unassigned fund balance in the amount of $6,300 to the General Fund to replenish the city manager's contingency account from the purchase of technology for city council and staff. Mr. Ham.
This appropriation simply, as the title suggests, replenishes the manager's account or contingency account to, that's typically used to deal with unplanned, unanticipated expenses. And we funded the technology acquisition out of that account earlier this year.
Okay. Are there any questions? Is there a motion to introduce?
So be.
Thank you. Item 7E is to consider introducing an ordinance appropriating a portion of the courthouse security reserve in the amount of $1,280 to the General Fund to purchase cell phone storage lockers for the courts. Mr. Ham.
Unless there are questions, I think that's.
Okay. Any questions? Is there a motion to introduce?
So moved.
Great, thank you. Item 7F is to consider introducing an ordinance appropriating a Perkins Career and Technical Education Grant in the amount of $10,896 to the general, to the school funds for increased support to the career coach position at Waynesboro High School. Mr. Ham.
These are pass-through funds, excuse me.
Any questions? I just offered, this is actually a really exciting thing because of our, our region, just as, what I've learned through this process is that we did not have a full-time career coach at Waynesboro High School until this fiscal year. So it's pretty exciting to be able to facilitate and that there are partnerships with, with different organizations, so. Is there a motion to introduce the ordinance?
So moved.
Great, thank you. Item 7G is to consider introducing an ordinance appropriating a state equipment grant in the amount of $9,439 to the school funds to be used to upgrade CTE Computer Labs at Kate Collins Middle School and Waynesboro High School. Mr. Ham.
Pass-through state funds.
Any questions? Is there a motion to introduce?
So moved.
Great, thank you. All right, number eight on the agenda is communication correspondence and calendar. Mr. Ham.
I don't have anything this evening, sir.
Okay. Is there, are we going to need to do a closed meeting this evening?
We do, but before we do that, citizens' comment.
Yeah, I was just, I was giving a heads up to folks so people don't grab their stuff and start.
Yeah, close. Sorry to preempt you there.
All right, so number eight is, or number nine rather, is citizen comment period.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Darrell Davis.
Mr. Davis, if you wouldn't mind stating your name and address for the record.
Darrell Davis, 425 Woodland Circle, Air and the City.
Great, thank you. And then the little timer will come up, it looks, works just like a stoplight. So the green will come on and then ask you to conclude when it hits red.
Okay.
Thank you.
In my residence, we've been having trouble with pole lights for the past several years. They go out, takes dominion several months or weeks or whatever, you know, their timeframe of digging the lines, putting them in and stuff. We got one pole light on top of the hill, one pole light by middle ways. When one goes out, the residence has no lighting whatsoever. And over the past couple of months, three of us, including me, has been hit with theft. And I've, several numerous times, has contacted the manager's office, that's who I was told, and I have no response of them and stuff. I even talked to the secretary of the scene and told if I didn't get a response, I'd be here this evening. I don't know what to do about it or who really to contact, but I get no response from the manager's office.
Okay. If you wouldn't mind sticking around after the meeting, we can have a conversation with you.
I want somebody just to come out and look at it. The lighting, I even brought a diagram over, you know, I can show you where the lighting is and stuff.
That'd be perfect.
And, I mean, all my residents, the neighbors up there, the gentleman that's come, he was feeling ill this evening. I mean, we can get a petition if y'all would like. I'm sure 100% of the neighbors would sign it. I mean, I done talked to several of them and stuff and I told them, we're coming to I mean, I done talked to several of them and stuff, and I told them worst come to worst, I'd come over myself and speak to y'all, see what we can do to resolve this problem in our community.
Yeah, if you wouldn't mind, happy to talk to you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Chris Hollinger.
Mr. Hollinger, if you wouldn't mind, your name and address for the record and.
Chris Hollinger, 44 Wildcat CV, Waynesboro, Virginia. Not a Waynesboro resident, but I do own a building in downtown. I'm concerned about the changes with the voting requirements with city council. I think everybody kind of said it best, it's scary to rush things along. And I agree, certain things need to have exceptions, and I hope you guys would work on an amendment there. To have some things be able to push through faster than others, especially things to deal with our daily operations with medical police, daily government, that needs to stay a little bit more in the public eye and to give us an opportunity to hear. I heard about this topic tonight. I thought it was scary that the city didn't really show up to even voice their concerns. There's not a lot of people that get involved. It's hard. This is my third city council meeting, period. I'm busy. I shouldn't be here right now to talk on this, I should be running my business. But I didn't know about it until it was brought to my attention at my bar, so I stopped what I was doing and I tried to get over here. So, sorry for being late, but I would hope you would consider, please, not voting for that specific amendment and make that amendment what could work for the citizens. So, that's all. Thank you.
Great, thank you so much. Anyone else? Okay. We have a closed meeting, which I'm told will be brief, so I just want you to know, it'll, it should be brief. We'll be back afterwards. So, item 10 is to conduct a closed meeting to consult with legal counsel regarding specific legal matters requiring the provision of the legal advice by our attorney as authorized by section 2.2-3711A7 of the Virginia Code. Is there a motion to enter into closed meeting?
Subject matter. The subject matter of the meeting is lawsuit brought by Waynesboro Village, L.C.
Okay. Great, thank you. Is there a motion to enter into closed meeting?
Motion.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. This requires a roll call vote. Ms. Portal.
Mayor Short.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Henderson.
Aye.
Councilman Anderson.
Aye.
Councilman Hostetter.
Aye.
Great, thank you. We're in session.
Julia. Do we have a script coming out?
I didn't have a script. Where is it? Julia, do we have a script for coming out? Okay. That'll work.
That'll work.
Sorry.
It's okay. It's okay. Your screen.
I moved that. If you could start here and say, I moved that, and then take it from there.
Okay.
Just leave out the note therefore.
Okay.
Be resolved in, I moved that.
Mr. Mayor, I move that the city council of Waynesboro hereby certified that to the best of each member's knowledge, one, only public business matters lawfully exempt from open meeting requirements by Virginia law were discussed in the closed meeting to which this certification, this certification resolution applies. And two, only such business matters as defined in the motion convening the closed meeting, convening to closed meeting were heard, discussed, and considered by Waynesboro City Council.
So, motion requires a roll call.
Mayor Short.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Henderson.
Aye.
Councilman Anderson.
Aye.
Councilman Hostetter.
Aye.
Right back in session. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
You're adjourned, thank you.